Then an application for a strip mall containing a 7-Eleven and one other store. And each one of those presents their own unique problems, mostly related to the location of this site in relationship to traffic in and out. Now, the residential use is in keeping with the density of the immediately surrounding residential properties. So there's no intensity of that density for the residential use. And residential uses are, as you heard testimony, much less of a traffic impact than the other approved, other proposed uses. The property has been vacant for quite a long time. There is a improvement proposed by Morris County that needs to be done as part of this application or any application. That has been a long time coming, but they're waiting for this site to get developed in order to proceed with that improvement. You've seen that on our plans, you've seen it incorporated into our plan, what that's going to be. That's all going to be done as part of this application. With that, I would rest my summation and ask the board to approve this application.
Where is the unit that you're taking away?
Well, given the configuration of the building and the unit layout, whether we remove one unit or three units or whatever, the building's going to be the same shape. There's no way to change the shape, given the lower floors, the trash room and the other things. So what we will do is we'll provide a revised architectural plan, removing that unit, should the board see fit to approve this application.
All right, but where is the unit going to be removed from?
It's going to be removed probably from the top.
How many units are on the top?
If you could just give me a moment, I will get that for you. There's a total, there was proposed a total of eight units on the top.
You mentioned that you felt it was the same as the density of adjoining development?
Yes, the intensity of the parking, the intensity of the units works out to be about the same as the neighborhood.
The original application was equivalent to 30 units to the acre.
That's right.
The adjoining developments are not 30 units to the acre.
No, but the down the street, Atlantic exit is exactly 30 units.
Down the street?
Yes.
Over the other side of the highway?
Well, the recently approved application.
You're still going to do the affordable unit?
Well, that's required by, that's required, so we'll have to do that unit. We are losing one affordable unit.
So you're going to have 29 units. You're going to have 20. 20 units, so you'll have eight, no, four affordables.
Right. Down from five.
There's a couple other adjustments you have to do to the site plan as per prior, there's a kiosk going in, there's a fireplug that guy wants, you've got to pool a parking space a little bit, you're going to have to identify which units are the affordables.
Yes.
Okay.
We will do all that on the final notice. We will comply with all the regulations.
And that little piece of sidewalk that you and I discussed, that you'll do that?
We will take care of that.
I have no other questions.
Just a quick question, where do we leave off with the right turn only onto Parsippany Boulevard?
Right turn only on the Parsipony Boulevard?
We discussed that.
I believe we pointed out that's a double yellow line and it has to be right turn only there anyway.
Maybe we talked about signage then, should we enforce that? I do remember that as part of the conversation.
Okay, we would be willing to.
Any other questions down here on the left?
Yeah, I just, I still have a question on the parking. I just listened to the recording of the last meeting since I wasn't here. And somewhere I heard that you are going to force tenants to have only one car. Is that correct?
We're only providing that space, yes.
But I think in the meeting it says we'll force because, you know, you don't have enough parking if there are two cars per, you know, apartment and there's no parking for the guest, basically, and there is no off-site parking because there is no place to park. So I'm really concerned about the number of parking you have. And you said you'll force now typically even a one-bedroom, husband and wife, or two people might have two cars. That's very common these days. So I was just wondering that there's no off-site parking.
As my client pointed out, they are developers of buildings like this in other counties in New Jersey. They make it an element of the lease if there is only one space provided with the unit. So they know going in, they only get the one space. Obviously, you can't control people. We talked about people parking across the street. We talked about people, we're not providing for that, there's no easements for that. My client's solution is the solution that they've utilized successfully in other higher, admittedly higher-density municipalities. But it has been successful to make it as a term of the lease, there's only one assigned parking space that goes with the unit, and that has worked out. People are leasing it that way. If you look at the layout of the units, just to go through the floor plan, again, you'll see that these are smaller units. So we're not really designating these for larger families. We don't think it's a good analogy to draw an analogy to someone with a single-family home who would have four cars in the driveway. That's really not the product that's being offered here. I mean, you know coming in what you're getting, you're signing that lease, we expect people to abide by the rules, the same way they would have to abide by the rules regarding noise, regarding pollution, and all the other commitments my client is making to the board and the community to maintain and operate this site.
So I actually want to continue on Mr. Perik's comments. So I can understand that your client has served other sites that were, that are high-intensity. Along with high-intensity places come a robust mass transit, which is something that we do not have here. So while you can dismiss the fact that a studio apartment with two people sharing would have maybe one car, because that's the way the rules are, in suburbia USA, Mr. O'Neill, the fact remains, and I, you know, I think that we are all in the interest of wanting to, to Mr. Willen's point in the last meeting, and I really truly can appreciate it, we really want to develop this site. I don't think there's not one board member here that wants to develop this site, okay? So we're all acting in good faith. However, I'm not finished. So however, with that, we also want our decision to be based on reality. And sometimes we've got to get our heads out of these figures that are spewed out and look at what's reality in Parsipony, which is a suburb with not a lot of robust transit. And so with that, you know, I too express a lot of Mr. Perik's issues in regards to the number of units versus the number of parking spaces and what is the probability, right, that no one's throwing a party simultaneously or having a family function simultaneously that's going to exhaust all of those parking spaces? And so you turn around and again, let's keep everything based on reality and what people are going to do, because we all driven to places where we're visiting friends at apartment buildings that don't have sufficient parking spaces. What do you do? You start going to different areas and then, and then there's a pedestrian concern in relation to that very busy intersection where people are just, you know, dying to attend whatever they have to attend to to facilitate the property, whether they're a visitor or whether they're a tenant. So I understand what your client's trying to achieve, but you just can't dismiss what happens in a realistic dynamic in relation to the residential, the intense residential schematics that you're trying to introduce in this area. And again, I go back to the fact that we all want to cite something here.
Right. In order to answer that question, I'd like to recall the witness that by Magnus Snyder to address some of those concerns. But I do want to address something that it pains me a little bit, being a Pennsylvania railroad family that I come from. Parsipony is served very well by bus routes into New York. And there are bus stops up the street, and there is also a Jersey Transit bus.
I'm very familiar with New Jersey Transit, Mr. O'Neill. And I'm very familiar with the transit system in and around Parsipony. But again, you're, and I don't remember, I don't remember mass transit specifically being stated in any of this testimony, as I reviewed the tapes, okay? All right. So you're vaguely referring to other intense, rather, other, whatever, intense areas that you refer to, okay? So I mean, I guess my question there is, based on where you're going with this, you know, where are those other sites that they were so successful in delineating only one parking space per unit and it's been so successful and thriving with no problems with parking congestion, with pedestrians just jetting across very highly-traveled areas at times dangerous? I'm interested in hearing that.
All right, let's hear it.
Previously, state your name for record.
Good evening, I'm Shergo Alkelani.
Mr. Alkelani previously.
He was on, yeah, he was on, okay.
Yes.
So Mr. Alkelani, you heard Ms. Snyder's reference to your previous testimony. Can you pick up where I left off?
Yeah, I appreciate you listening to the audio of it. So I want to just clarify one thing is that in our leases, we're going to commit this 20 units and each apartment gets only one car. However, there are 31 spaces on the site. If there was, for example, I believe for the three-bedroom, say the co requirement, and I'm sorry, I don't know, it's off the top of my head, but say they needed two cars to be designated specifically, then we would certainly do so, so we'd have 10 leftovers instead of 11. But we feel that there's plenty of parking for additional visitors and guests, kind of more than we're used to.
Right. And so my reference to lack of robust transit, if I could be more specific, okay? I understand we've got robust transit in, taking people from Parsipony to New York. What we don't have in relation to Mr. O'Neill's reference to, you know, robust mass transit compared to, you know, in the mind of a person who comes from Pennsylvania, it's, we don't have robust transit as it relates to somebody who wants to, well, travel from here and go to, let's just say, your house, or your house, or your office, Mr. King. That's what I'm talking about.
Over.
Okay, okay, but, but it's not, that's not mass transit. That's, that's first mile, last mile transport. So that's not, that's not mass transit.
Sure.
Okay? And so therefore, and so therefore, okay, it really does force the resident in that one studio apartment that they may share with a roommate, a partner, whatever the case may be, in needing that separate car to do basic things that those in urban areas do not rely upon is going to the grocery store, whereas in an urban setting, you can take the one, you could take the, whatever, the 27, the this, that, you know, there's, there's more bus routes to choose from. And so therefore, I think that the pressures on this property, and frankly, the one space, one unit delineate, or 1.2 space per one unit delineation is unrealistic.
So I hear you. We're willing to stipulate in the resolution, because we really do believe strongly this way, and we're only talking about 20 units. It's not like we're talking about like an 800-unit complex that I'm going to represent to you as only be one space per unit. But it's a 20-unit building and we could absolutely stipulate in the resolution that our leases will undoubtedly only allow one car per unit. And people that do have two cars, we just simply can't take them, but it's a, it's a.
I agree, because the play, because the site has limitations. That's not your fault, you know what I mean? But the site has limitations. Okay.
Yeah, so we're, there's, we feel very strongly that the market is strong enough that people just have two cars, we just have to turn them away and somebody will absolutely come along and excuse me, a popular place to live.
Thank you.
I apologize if I asked this at the last meeting, I do kind of recall discussing it. I think in your other complexes where you have one car per unit, how do you enforce that when people violate it?
They get towed away.
Someone who does?
I usually have a contract with like a local tow company, so.
Right, who calls that in? Is it like a building manager or something?
For a 20-unit building, there's typically not a building manager, but it's a situation where you have a contract with someone, they're out there pretty quickly, say definitely within a half hour. So for residents, if that situation.
So the residents are left to turn to each other, right?
Right. But there'll be enough, kind of like, hopefully vacant spaces and that there'll be 31 spaces total that kind of there's some shifting around, but the commitment is, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't expand my point. It wasn't just that, that we're limiting in the lease, they also have to waive off that if they do have another vehicle, that they're just not parking here, they need to show us where they're going to park the vehicle. So we're, that's, we've done that in our hometown of Cliffside Park, we're proud to call it the seventh-densest town in the country. And despite being able to see New York City, you can't get to it because the transportation's horrible. So we hear you loud and clear, we have two train, two bus lines, two roads where bus lines go and it's prohibitive and going anywhere but north and south. So I understand the concern, and in those places we have one per one, one space per unit, but also no additional parking, there's no guest parking or anything like that. So we think here we'll be able to very easily manage that process.
And 30, four out of the 31 spaces are EV spaces?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, there was conflicting, so, yeah, you and I heard the same tape. So there was conflicting commentary around that, all right? Initially, it was 34, right? It was four was, were EV, bringing everything up to 34, now we're talking about five. There was, in the beginning of the testimony, it was four, it turned to five. I'm, I'm not clear how it was resolved. I don't even remember if anybody revisited that.
I apologize, reflecting on my notes, we did at the end commit to wiring all five of them up because of the requirement that they all be up and running immediately. So we were banking it originally, but now it's the fifth unit will be wired up.
So five of the 31.
Five of the 31 or five in addition to 31?
No, I think five of the 31.
Okay.
Couple of quick things. On the number of units, so you're down to 20 units, so you're reducing one, one-bedroom unit on the, on the third floor?
Right.
That's your plan?
I thought it was a two-bedroom, but you're, I think you're right, it was a one-bedroom.
If it's a two-bedroom, your requirement is 37, and you'll have 31. So you're getting closer. Just one last question. I think you testified to the business model that you ran, out of, when you have 20 units and you'll have one three-bedroom unit. My question is, why don't you just not have any three-bedroom units? Because that would be the one unit that might cause additional cars and parking issue. I'm just putting it out there. That's the affordable unit.
You're absolutely right, but unfortunately.
That's the only affordable unit is the three-bedroom.
The state requires that you provide one, two, and three-bedroom units available. So it's the only three bedrooms, the affordable one.
It's, it's got to be a three, two, two, seven, one. I thought that was the answer, I just wanted to add that.
The most profitable unit in the building.
Part of our, part of our plan doesn't have any three-bedrooms.
Then it doesn't have the affordable. The affordable required. Yeah, that's what I wanted to add on the rest. Well, that's why they have to have the three-bedroom.
I think it requires a certain number of.
Chairman, I have one other question. Okay. So another thing I heard on the tape is that one of the expert said it will be difficult to satisfy zoning requirement without any variances because of its undersized lot. I hear that a lot. You knew it's undersized lots and you can make this application without the variance that you asked for if you reduce the size of the building, correct? It's not that just because it's undersized lots, all the variances are, you know, without, you cannot build without variances.
Sure, if I could explain that, this particular property is in the, it's the only property in that quarter of the intersection that is in a commercial zone, not a residential zone. And as such, you need to provide a big setback of a residential buffer. So we have neighbors to either side that we back up to, and they have to call, you know, on one side they have 30 feet of grass before you get to their building. And we need to also provide that setback of 30 feet. So, you know, we would, I think this works out pretty well for us in that, other than that condition in terms of the site layout, I think it, the building's placed pretty well on the site. I mean, I think the footprint, and I'm sorry, I don't have the plans in front of me, I'm embarrassed to say, but I think the footprint is rather small.
Yes, I will remind the board that we're, we have existing non-conformities regarding lot area, lot width, and lot depth. So it is an undersized lot.
And Joe, one more question with regard to the parking. Do you have to have handicap, correct? Because it's over five units?
Yes, that's true.
And how many handicap?
There's two.
Thank you. This show on the plan, I think it would work. Do it, I think so.
Are the EV, EV-only parking or anyone can park there?
The handicap.
No, the EV spots.
EV spots are for the tenants, right?
No, I know, but I pull in and all the other spots are full and I drive off. SUV, that's not EV.
Those won't necessarily be dedicated to a tenant, but only tenants can park.
I understand. I live there and I don't have an electric vehicle, am I allowed to park there?
If there's no other, if you live there, you have your own space and you only have one.
Oh, it's assigned?
No, I'm saying that if you live there, you only have one space assigned to you. So if somebody's in your space and the EV space is the only space available, certainly you're going to be allowed to park there until you, somebody tows your.
It's not EV only.
Not exclusive.
No, no.
Okay. Any other questions, bud, board? We go into conference? Somebody make a motion for the conference?
Some of them.
Some of them. All in favor? And opposed? Kind of volunteer start? Casey, you want to start?
Yeah, I'll start. I think I'm concerned about the parking here, and I think the applicant can reduce the number of units till further. I know they have done from 20, gone from 21 to 20, but if they reduce the units, it kind of alleviates some issues with the parking, and that's my concern.
Yeah, I mean, I too am concerned about the parking. I think it is unrealistic, given the intensity and the scope of the development. I think that it's not going to play out to the vision that was mapped out in the applicant's Also, too, I was a little dumbfounded by the fact that the traffic expert was, apparently didn't consider district school bus travel patterns on the site itself. This is, this is a very intense site with the 21 units. I'm also very concerned about this indoor, the indoor synchronization of trash disposal. It seems like in Esther Williams', you know, synchronized swimming presentation. So I'm really concerned about that and just the hygiene itself. You know what it is? It's that, it sounds like the way hotels and timeshares are run, right? Where you have the common shoot on the floor or whatever it is, and it all just seems to snake down to one common area and, you know, when, when we start talking about putting our trash on the inside, I'm waiting for the rooftop trash plan to come through in another application. It just seems like, you know, that's proof enough that this is a very intense project. And, you know, it's kind of timely relative to last night's, you know, budget, budget hearings whereby all accounts on the mayoral level, the department head level, the first responders level, and the residents level about how our area is quickly transforming into a very congested city-like atmosphere. And it, you know, and I couldn't help but think, well, yeah, because it's intense projects like, like this, to Mr. Willen's point, that requires, you know, and I'm, I'm being like a little, you know, clip it here, with all due respect, it's no insult to you, but it's because we're asking for, let me just be a little bit more diplomatic if I can, a voluminous amount of variances for these sites. And, and again, there's not one member of this board who does not want to develop the site, but at the same time, even though it's better than the previous application, does not necessarily mean we should not recognize the problematic elements of this that kind of throw our area in, you know, into more intense, you know, property sites. And it's a, it's a tough traffic area and I see a lot of, and, and you know, I listened to one of the experts' testimony around the county and how the county's okay with this and the, and they're coordinated with the county and they're coordinated with this. And, you know, with all due respect, I really can appreciate that. But at the end of the day, it's our first responder resources that are going to have to be dispatched in these areas, and I'm just not in favor of voting for such an intense usage in this area, the way it's been mapped out and the unrealistic parking that goes along with it. So I will be voting no.
Mr. Capra? Come back to me. Mr. Ready, I'm sorry, Bernie, Bernie, you were hiding behind.
I'll keep hiding.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I guess the question I have is, because parking obviously is an issue, and we want to see this site developed. My question to my fellow board members is, how would you resolve the parking issue as to develop the site?
Well, I mean, less intense. I don't know how else to put it. Less intense with more realistic parking.
Well.
And a trash, and, and more of a, like, room for the trash, because I really, that trash arrangement's a little on the wonky side.
Yeah. Well, if the building was smaller, there'd be room someplace to trash.
The building was, but again, it lends to my argument about the intensity of this project.
So it's two spaces per apartment?
Again, the intensity of the project as a whole, all right? And, and really, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be relative to the size of the unit?
The requirement as it stands now would be 27, 37 spaces, and they have 31. To have a match, to have a match.
So to wait, so to wait, so in order to get to the point where they would not need a variance for parking, they have to reduce apartments.
Yeah, you can, you can do this.
Right?
If they drop two more units, they would be, the parking would be compliant.
Is it the same requirement for one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom?
Well, the way, the way the RSIS, which is the rule, would comply, they would comply. So two, two single, if they went from, they originally were 21, they were offered to be 20, if they went to 18, they would be in compliance.
Is 18, what, is that dropping the one-bedroom or the two-bedroom or?
It really doesn't make a whole lot of difference.
Does it matter?
No, because the two-bedrooms are two and the one-bedrooms are 1.75. When you make the calculation, you come out to 37. I mean, it's got 31 parking spaces, so if you back into that, it's 18 units.
If they went to 18 units, how many were affordable?
It doesn't change.
That's still four.
Uh, no, they'd have a partial unit, the way the ordinance is written, they can either, the way the ordinance is written, if it's more than half a unit, no, it's, any partial unit triggers the next unit up, so it's still four. 18 times two is 36.
Is there a point in the, in the size of the development where a three-bedroom wouldn't be required?
No.
So even if it's only, so if it's only five units, you still have to have a three?
Five units, they don't have to do it all.
Oh, I'm sorry, 10 units.
10 units, they'd have to do two.
And one would have to be.
And then they'd have to get a waiver from whosever administering, most likely they would have two two-bedroom. The town hires a consultant to run the administrative aspects. The town is, as its settlement agreement, agreed to UAC, which is the Uniform Housing The town is, as its settlement agreement, agreed to UAC, which is the Uniform Housing Code. It sets the percentages of unit types. And that's the way it comes out, Bernie.
Okay.
Bernie, you okay?
Well, I have the same concern with the parking. And I felt that twenty or twenty-one units might be more too intense for the project. I would be, I mean, if they were able to come down to eighteen units and not have to get a variance for parking, uh, I would be in favor of this project.
So right now, it's-
The way it is, I would say is no.
Mr. Ready?
Yeah, with respect to this site and the previous applicants and all, it has a lot of history and we can write a book on this one, looks like. Only, basically, it is only for in and out and the traffic and the parking now. And with all due respect, it's a good application. You guys did a lot of things to make it a residential unit this time. However, due to the obligation of this parking, I will be voting if it is eighteen units.
Would be what?
Eighteen units. No, mono-parking.
So if it was eighteen units, who you'd be?
Yes.
So was? Well, obviously, I think even the applicant knows parking was an issue coming in. And I think their testimony, uh, they're running a business, they're confident that their business model and experience at underplaces will, uh, address the issues been, been raised by this board. Having said that, uh, the enforcement thing, it's going to be a, a real issue for you, I believe, okay, going through time. And I just put it out before we end this conferencing, uh, you've done extensive study that I don't recall in the presentation of the requirement of the number of units to make this a viable business proposition for you, okay? If it was in the testimony, I'm sorry, I, I must have not caught it because I'm kind of a numbers guy, but obviously, you know your business and you got that number in there for a viable break-even level, or I, I don't know how you determine that number of units for that site, so. Excuse, excuse me, Davey, they, they can't testify to that economics and break-even points and things like that, nothing to do with the- I'm saying, I, in the testimony, I haven't heard how, why this number of units was required, okay? And I don't think they, I don't think they have to say in terms of economic situation or where they're, show their financial statements.
We would, we would love to tell you that the bank will not write a loan to build a building below twenty units on this. Nobody will. So all this discussion of eighteen, sixteen, you're never going to get anyone to finance it. You couldn't get them to finance it before the interest rates went up. But that, as the chairman has pointed out, is not of valid consideration.
That's why I wasn't-
But it is reality. So when we talk about, why can't you do eighteen, the thing I can't say to you is, because nobody will write that well. He's dying to do it. As you can see, he is hopping around.
Can I, can I just add something and I don't know, this is necessary to test-
We're in, we're in conference.
We're in conference, it's not the time for more testimony. Anything else, Davey?
Nope.
All right, I, I have one thing to say to the board. Well, I'm sorry, who?
Mr. Kaplan.
Kaplan's still passed.
All right, we'll come back to you. No, we'll come back to you. What I don't understand, and I was not on the, I did not sit on the application, when the application for four units and three stores on my old property of Bev Brook Road got a parking variance, got a parking variance, and I don't see this being that much different, because you're talking about four apartments upstairs, potentially eight drivers, three stores downstairs, you guys passed it like, uh, you know, like it was nothing. So I, I don't know why everybody's got their underwear in or not over this parking.
I'm talking, there's a lot more parking.
Yeah, but, Mr. Chair, to your point, I was, I, I was not, I didn't vote on that and neither did you. You and I were absent that day.
Yeah, oh, you weren't there? Okay. All I know is I was very upset that they got a parking variance.
I understand, but I wasn't there.
And now, and now it's, so, but, you know, guys, I'm going to go back to the statement I made. I've been doing this a long time. And sometimes you gotta, you gotta look at an application and you gotta say, you know what? It's the best we're going to get there. We're not going to get anything better there. We're, we're going to have a parade, people will come in with the different applications, Seven-Elevens, Quick Check, whatever. You know, they're gonna, they're, they're going to want to develop that property. It's a prime piece of property. I, I, I think we're just hung up on parking. I, I'm sorry. I would vote in favor. Mr. Kaplan?
I think we know that parking's an issue. One, one suggestion, by the way, as I've been thinking about this, is you may want to put speed bumps in because you're going to get people cutting through that parking line who don't want to sit at that light to turn right. Just popped into my head. I like that, throwing it out there for your consideration.
That's for sure.
I'd really think about that. I wish I had thought about that last meeting and, and forced it. You know, I, I'm looking at this as an extension to the units behind it, and I know they're not exactly comparable. I, I don't love it. I really don't. And, and I think that's why this one's such a, this is a tough one with the parking. But I, you know, I have to agree with Mr. Iraquin at this point. I can't think of something else that's going to go in there that, that we're going to love. We're rejecting everything that comes in front of us for this piece. And I think at some point we have to say, it's not great, but it's, it's going to have to do. And honestly, the park, you know, I kind of look at the parking as the tenants and, and you guys are going to have to duke that out and figure it out. I, I worry more about the traffic than the parking. That to me is the bigger issue.
And they're not going to park on the street, we know that.
Oh, I know, that's not going to happen. I'm thinking about backup, turns, the cut-throughs, that to me is actually the bigger issue. The parking, people figure out parking, but this isn't good. I'm not saying this is good, I don't like it, but people figure it out. Kind of like how water finds a way, people find a way with parking. You know, if they start parking across the street, those tenants are going to have to tell them. I don't love it, but I, I, I do think ultimately I'm going to land on a yes vote for this.
Mr. Chairman, I, I didn't tell you what I'm going to vote, uh, I left it open, uh, and I, I know we can't cross the border, but at this point, I think we have the best application and applicant that we've had for this site. And if we want to develop it, we're going to have to compromise in some places, and we all want to develop it, I will be a yes vote.
Can I change my vote, please?
Sure.
With the hardship and all, especially this location, with the previous applicants and a lot, lot more problems than this one. So this is a little reasonable fit in that area, considering the hardship of the applicants. I, I am voting yes.
Ready, who changed your mind, me or Bob?
No, it's not-
It was a, it was a team of, Bernie, what do you think?
The hardship.
I'll go yes.
It may be in, in, in next six months, may another application come, same issue come.
I think that's a bit, like-
And you got your speed bump, by the way.
I don't, I don't think it's a prime piece of real estate. I think it's a pretty crappy piece of real estate, and if it was prime, it would have been developed. Something, at some point, we have to say, something's got, something's got to go there. And I don't know that-
This is not, it's not perfect.
It's not perfect.
But, you know-
It's intense. I agree. But it's like, I look at it as an extension of the units that are already there, fifty feet behind it.
Yeah, it's not going to change the complexion of the area.
It's actually a little nicer.
I think you got one.
Sorry, you may not pass.
Do I have a, do I have a motion to come out of conference?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Do I have a volunteer to, to draft a, do I have a volunteer? Let's do this. Let's have a motion to authorize Mr. King to draw up a resolution and review that with Mr. O'Neill before we, we have, we have a final. Is that okay, Mr. O'Neill? That's, I mean, it's the same thing, right? We're approved. So who, who, you move that, Mr.?
Yes, second.
Second, any discussion? Nora Calderol?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Paree.
No. I'm still concerned about the parking and the trash inside the building, and I'll say, I'll vote no.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Willans?
Yes.
Iraquin?
Yes. Do I count five?
Five yes.
All right, it's granted. Don't forget the speed bumps.
Yeah, will do. Thank you, uh-
Make sure you-
Thank you for your time this evening.
Make sure you put Mr. Kaplan's name on it, okay?
Not my face, though.
Uh, let's take a five-minute break. A motion to adjourn the seven o'clock meeting. All in favor? Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA ten colon four at six, ten colon four dash six at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Still here.
Mr. Paree?
Here.
Mr. Ready?
Present.
Mr. Snyder? Mr. Willans?
Here.
Chairman Iraquin?
Present.
We have a board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Present.
We did the pledge of allegiance at the seven o'clock meeting, so we will defer that. Any member of the public have any business to be brought to this board this evening that's not on this evening's agenda? Looks like it here in our scene. I, I would just like to say that my last meeting, my alter ego was here. I was sick and I might have acted a little rough. So I apologize if anybody was insulted and, um, move forward. But I just felt like I had to say that. I was, I was not well. Anyway, let's go to resolutions.
Did you go to confession?
Can I go to confession? No, actually, Davey, I didn't move in. Okay. I just hope my wife never sees that tape. All right, application, resolutions.
All can be done by everyone.
All right, somebody move twenty-two fifty-six, twenty-two sixty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I move applications, twenty-two colon fifty-six, twenty-two colon sixty-two, twenty-two colon sixty-eight, and twenty-two colon seventy-four, all for C variances.
Second, Ready?
Any discussion, Nora Calderol?
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Paree?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Willans?
Yes.
Iraquin?
Yes. That takes care of resolutions. All right, now we're going to go to, uh, application twenty-one seventy-one, Puddingstone Developers. From my understanding is we still don't have a confirmed date in place, is that correct, Nora?
Uh, we are looking at July seventeenth, uh, but as, I don't have the, you know, final approval yet.
Okay. So we're going to carry case twenty-one seventy-one, Puddingstone Developers, if there's anybody here for that case, we're going to carry to our next meeting, which-
With all consent, uh, extensions?
Yeah, I think I granted extensions through the end of this one.
Twenty-twenty-four?
But, uh, let's, let's just leave it to the end of this one.
Do we have a place to go or we going to do something?
I think we're going to, Mr. President. Okay, it's Nora, so what's the date that we're carrying it to?
Are you talking about me?
Yes, sir.
I said I would ask that they carry this matter to the next available meeting to assign the dates, because they haven't been able to confirm a location for the hearing itself. So I asked that it be carried to the next available meeting. I pointed out to the board that I granted extensions for all the deadlines for approval to the end of this month. And I would still like to stick with that, and I'll, I'll obviously grant further extensions for notes.
Carry to May seventeenth.
Okay, a motion to carry case twenty-one seventy-one, Puddingstone Developers to May seventeenth without further notice, and the extension is good through May thirty-first.
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, anyone opposed? Okay, that takes care of Puddingstone tonight. Now, how about, um, how about we go into the cases here? Twenty-three oh four, Andrew Irazari, One Fox Hill Road, C variance to legalize the patio, wood deck, wood dock, decking, and turf.
So raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about the, for the board's truthfulness, you got? And you are Mr. Um, Mr. Irazari?
Yes.
And you're the owner of the subject property? You're sworn to have a seat, please speak into the microphone. So, Chairman, the witness is sworn.
So is every, everything's in there already? The patio, the wood dock and turf, it's all in already, or?
No.
It's not?
No, it was just the patio.
The patio?
Yeah.
Did you put the patio in there or was it there when you bought the house?
Uh, part of it was there and then I added to it.
Okay, where is the patio? You got some dock areas outlined on your sketch.
So, uh, the patio is represented, well, uh, I coded it by the, um, the legend here, it says pavers, so wherever it says pavers is what I classify as patio that I've been wanting.
What are the dock squares?
Uh, the dark squares, that was, so on the, uh, on my original survey, it has those areas listed as concrete, but, uh, you know, currently they're, they're not, they're just dirt. So I added that to the, uh, the breakdown of what's-
So you took the concrete out?
No, it was, there was never concrete there when I bought the property.
Is that what you're going to do, is put concrete there now?
No.
Just going to leave it dirt?
Uh, yeah, the, the areas, so there's like a, you know, the areas that are shown in that red is like, there's trees and, you know, it's, I'm not doing anything like that. I'm really concerned about the patio, the turf, and then the, the wood deck.
Where's the turf? Behind the house and out by the lake?
Uh, the, so the turf area is, uh, up in this corner here where, I mean, on, on the survey, it's the area that says block one oh nine, lot one, in that text area.
That's the turf, okay.
Yes.
What's the purpose of that?
The purpose of the turf?
Yeah.
So, um, right now, that area is just all dirt. I mean, I've tried to put grass and there's a, a lot of tree coverage on my property. It's a low point, so there's a lot of water runoff, so, uh, really, my attempts to grow anything have failed and it's just a muddy mess right now. So I want to put turf to-
Artificial turf on that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you know, the turf now is pretty much made to look exactly like grass, so I figured it was something that would-
Water goes through it, right?
Sorry?
The water goes through it.
Yes, water goes through it.
Got it.
Okay. Well, you got one of the funniest shared blocks I've seen there in over the years. I'm telling you.
The house is in the road.
The house is in the road, part of it.
I mean, you can't grant a variance for that, but I don't know what to do. When you bought the house, did you know the house extended into the right of way?
Yeah, so, um, I, I, I actually have an agreement with the town. We've, we've gone through the process of getting that, uh-
Straight down easement or something?
Yeah.
Okay. Wow. This is taking a while.
Have you seen Mr. Lizza's report, Township Engineer? Have you seen that? Day, day first, probably not.
No, I'm sure he didn't.
You have an extra copy?
Yes, I did.
Is there something we could do about that?
Yeah, I was going to say, this is kind of-
Missing information.
When we could do?
How do we fix that?
You don't hear the, um, application for-
Until next, yeah.
Why didn't, why didn't we, why didn't we have a fire report on that two-family house? Why didn't, why didn't we, why didn't we have a fire report on that two-family house? Huh? Why didn't we have a fire report? You have a fire report now. Okay, Mr. Irisari, um, if you read down, um, the first is kind of a boilerplate that he puts on all of his memos that Township Engineers wants to make sure you're going to control the runoff, okay? And there are various ways of doing that because you, you're in a, you're in a 15,000 square foot zone, R3.
You got 8,000.
You're, you're, you're worse than a 40 and a 60, okay? And, um, so you, you may want to, if we grant you approval, consult with an engineer about how to mitigate or how to deal with the water.
Right.
And then, once that is done, then the suggestions, you go to Mr. Lizza and say, "This is what I'm going to do," okay?
It drains into the lake.
Drains into the lake, okay.
It doesn't drain into the lake.
He's asking you to, to reduce the coverage. I mean, you're, it, it appears you're not asking for a lot on an 8,000 square foot.
He is. He's taking 200 feet off.
He's what, the what?
He's got one of his, the dark areas or the red areas, whichever map you have, that's going to stay as, as a permious. It's going to be reducing the coverage. You said you weren't going to cover, you just got to...
So, so the...
Stone or whatever.
Uh, so the dock, the area shown in, in, uh, the areas representing the decking is an extension of docks on the, on the lake themselves. So there's just a portion that, you know, attaches to the actual ground itself.
Water goes through it, right?
Yes, water goes through it.
Would you sit down with the engineer, explain to him all the pieces?
All improvements within 50 feet of the water's edge requires, edge requires is prohibited. You must demonstrate that the proposed construction will have no detrimental effects on the land that's surrounding, around the area. Do you have any proposed construction within 50 feet of the, of the lake?
Um...
Yeah, of course he does. Yeah, he does, yeah.
Okay.
My, my question is, that's a, I had a question about this one. This is the weird remark because either it's prohibited and you can't do it, or it's not prohibited, you just have to show how there's no detrimental. To me, prohibited means you can't do it. End of discussion.
The latter is what the...
Does this actually make grammatical sense here?
No.
All improvements, I was reading it and I'm, I'm fumbling over the words. This, this doesn't even make...
The house...
Maybe you said, maybe he means requires a permit?
No, I think it's prohibited.
Yes, but I think you can, you can apply.
The same provision is on Lake Precipity and it's, we have lots of development.
Okay. So it's prohibited, but you can do it with permission.
I mean, this is already there. It was there before that regulation was ever put in the ordinance.
You got to get a flood hazard permit? Are you aware of that?
Uh...
Number four?
He just got this letter, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought maybe he's a stupid...
Do you have flood hazard insurance now?
Uh, I'm not in a flood zone.
I think you were, yeah. But your lot drains to the lake.
Um...
More or less.
I would say, yeah, more or less. I mean, I'm at a, my, my property slopes, but there's a series of retaining walls that have been there, you know?
Right.
For God knows how long and, you know, the water...
Backs up against...
There's no, I would say there's no alarming amount of erosion or sediment runoff when it rains, really. Um, you know, I, I made sure that none of what I'm proposing is just solid concrete where the water has nowhere to escape to. Everything that I'm proposing is, you know, quote un...
Water will get through it.
Yeah, it's, it's technically permeable.
So it's not really impervious coverage? And John, what's number five, you need a right-of-way opening permit? This right-of-way opening permit is required for...
I think he has to sit down with, uh, the Township Engineer, explain his plan.
Okay.
You're not putting any new driveways or anything here, no.
Okay.
And I think when you look at your sketch, you could possibly say, "Oh, okay, he's building something here, building something there." Sit down with him and explain it and you should be okay.
So the, the stone wall that's down from, not to consider, if that was there when you moved it, right?
I'm sorry, which stone wall?
Uh, I'm looking at the, a long rainbow lake at the top. Okay, that, that wall's been there forever, right?
Right, it's a, it's a loose stone wall.
And then your decking, which has no variance off the property line at the lake, that was all there or have you put all the decking out?
No, so the, the decking itself was, uh, something that I went through the town's homeowners association to, um, change the, the frontage of my property to the lake, creating some sort of...
That's why you're here, basically, right?
Some sort of bulkhead. No, the, so, uh, to my understanding, the homeowners association, uh, is, takes ownership of anything that's over the water. So specifically what I'm here for is anything over the, the, the property itself, the land.
They approved your other...
They approved the design of anything that was over the water.
You have it ready?
Um, I...
If you don't, you ought to get it, take it to the engineers office.
Yeah, I could, I, I've gotten, you know, I've gotten approval, so I can, I can dig it up.
Any other questions by the board? And any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given this evening?
Jennifer mentioned something about a shed, so we add that to the application.
I didn't see that in her note. In her note?
Yeah.
Applicant may wish to legalize shed in setback.
Um, I, I didn't add any shed on the property. The only shed that was there is, has been there for, you know, before I...
That's what she's talking about.
You, you want, you want a variance to legalize it, right?
Yeah.
You want to keep it, right?
You want to keep it, right?
Yeah.
So, okay, okay. Thank you, Bernie. Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions on this witness on testimony given this evening and here and unseen on? Uh, someone like to make a statement as to the...
I think the applicant's been working with the town officials and the homeowners association is doing things in good, uh, will, and I think he's willing to follow the engineer's recommendation. I will be, I should probably move applications.
Someone frame a resolution?
Application 23:4, Andrew Irisari, One Fox Hill Road, Block 109, Lot Number One, Zone RDSD to issue a gap, grant a C variance to legalize patio, wood dock, and turf contracted to section 430-35, Column 4, 8, 9, and 13, and in compliance with the engineering's report. And to legalize the shed out.
Is there a second? Sorry, any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Paree.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willans.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of variance is granted. We'll memorialize this in two weeks and you'll be free to proceed, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have fun. Okay, let's call case 2307, Rula. Please come forward.
Are you both going to provide testimony? Raise your right hands, you swear a firm testimony about before the board's true self you got. And for the record, you are, um, Mr. and Mrs. Rula. Rula. Can you hear the owners of the subject property?
Yes.
And you're sworn, just please have a seat and speak into the microphone, Mr. Chairman, and this is our sworn.
Okay, so we're looking for... Is the shed there now?
No, it's existing.
Yeah.
The guy, the house that's next to you, this is 4.2 feet away from, is there a fence along, between you and the guy next door, homeowner? The survey's showing fences on one side of your backyard.
Yeah.
The neighbor's fence. Is there a fence across the back or no? There is. It can, it's hard to tell, okay? What, what is it, a stockade?
I need you to speak, get my closer.
Final light fence, okay. Six feet high? Six feet high?
Six feet on the back and five feet on the side.
Okay. So the, the shed is one variance. That's the whole thing?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah. I guess, why can't you move the shed so it's the right, in the right spot?
Like, what we're, what we normally see are people coming here with hardships. We can't do this because, and if you look at the last case, that property was in the shape of a slice of pizza. And anything, if he moves his wheelbarrow from one side to the other, he needs a variance, right? You have a really big, open backyard, as far as I can tell. Why can't you move it a couple of feet and be done with this?
If you move the shed, you don't need a variance, we don't have to prove it. Would you agree to move the shed?
How many feet?
Five, needs to be six feet off.
So conforming a lot.
Yeah. I mean, the compromise would be that the guy next door to you, this is 4.2 feet away, why can't you equal that, both on the back fence and the side? Move it out a little bit.
Oh.
From the corner.
So I thought the allowed is like 10 feet away from the fence?
Six feet.
Oh, six feet?
Six feet.
Six and six, but I think Mr. Chadwick said he would go for 4.4.
4.2.
To make it uniform with the neighbors, right?
Take it and run.
Take it, that's a bargain, 4.2.
You agree with that? Four feet on each side?
I was going six.
Good, four feet, good, good.
Yeah, it's four feet.
4.2, just like the neighbor, just like the neighbor, 4.2 feet. Anything else, that's it?
It's like a game show.
You want the box or win the door number three?
Oh, yeah, that's true, there's impervious coverage.
It's, it's not...
It's de minimis.
It's de minimis.
I know, just bringing it up.
Yep, no, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. Okay, uh, and there's no other questions by the board? Are there any members of the public that have any questions of this, these witnesses on testimony given this evening? I hear none, see none. De minimis request, the applicant's been nice enough to meet us halfway. Someone frame a resolution.
Application 23:7, Melitan and Mylar Ruloda, 30 Long Court Road, Block 327, Lot 13, Zone RDSD to issue a grant of C variance to construct a shed, contracted to section 430-10C, side and rear, side and rear yards, uh, section 430-10I and section 430-35, Column 10, adjusting the rear and side yards to 4.24.
Second, Willans. Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Paree.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willans.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of variance is granted. We'll memorialize this in two weeks and you'll be free to proceed. Okay? Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Let's call application 2282, Michael Levine, 7 Manchester Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Matthew Capizzi, I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Okay.
I have one witness who's supported the application, Mr. Chairman, my engineer, Jeff Agarian, who's setting up.
Okay.
Is it okay I can give the board just a brief summary about what the application involves?
Sure.
Thank you. So we have an existing single-family house with a pool and patio and the rear yard. Their site as it stands today is nonconforming as to impervious coverage, and the pool is nonconforming as to the side and rear yard setbacks. What we're proposing to do by way of this application is construct some building additions off the backside of the house, predominantly over existing impervious areas. We're also going to be rebuilding the pool in a conforming location, so those nonconforming side and rear yard setbacks will now be eliminated. We're also significantly upgrading drainage at the site. Uh, we are picking out about 60 or 70 square feet of coverage, so the nonconforming impervious coverage will remain, but we are improving that condition. Despite the reduction in impervious coverage, we have proposed some, what we believe to be significant drainage improvements, and Mr. Agarian will discuss. Uh, the application essentially requires two forms of variance, really building coverage and, uh, the impervious coverage, which again is, is existing but being improved by way of the application.
Sir, you raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's true self you got. And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Jeff Agarian.
And you are engineer?
Licensed professional engineer, yes.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, sir.
And you've been provided testimony before this court or other boards and stated in hears and before the court. All right, um, Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn and qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agarian. Mr. Agarian, would you mind? Is it okay, Mr. Chairman, if he just takes the microphone and goes to his...
That's fine.
This is the plan set that we filed with the application, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Agarian, if you can just take us through the existing conditions. If you could take us through the existing conditions and what we're proposing, please.
Uh, certainly. So the, um, the property has a, has a traditional, uh, non-traditional configuration with the rear yard line connecting at an angle to the adjacent side yard line, as you see here. The lot area is 15,956 square feet and improved with a single-family dwelling, driveway, rear deck, swimming pool and pool patio, and is also surrounded by a six-foot-tall, uh, privacy fence. Again, the existing building coverage on the property is 10.2%, where 15% is allowable, and the coverage by building and pavement existing is 39.6%, where 30% is allowable, uh, giving, uh, giving us an existing nonconforming condition.
The setbacks to the pool are nonconforming as well?
Yes, the setbacks to the pool are also nonconforming. The pool currently is at, um, 2.3 feet from the rear and 5.3 feet from the side, uh, nonconforming condition.
Thank you, Jeff. If you can take us through what's proposed, please.
Um, sure, so I'll just quickly come back to the existing conditions and talk of what we're removing. So we're removing this large portion of asphalt driveway along the side of, side of the house here. We're removing the pool, the existing pool patio, the rear deck, the rear walkway, and the portion of the rear patio. Uh, and we are proposing to construct a building addition, uh, in the rear of the dwelling off the back of the house here, uh, with a new covered porch, uh, terrace in the center of the home, a new pool, new pool patio, a shed, um, and obviously some, as we discussed, some drainage improvements, which we will be proposing in the front yard. The max building coverage, um, at 15% is, which is allowable, we are proposing 18.9%. The, um, expanded footprint of the, uh, building addition is 956 square feet. The rear covered porch is 228 square feet, and the terrace overhang is 76 square feet. The improvements are entirely located in the rear yard. There's going to be no impact on the streetscape. The building addition improvements here are going to be taken place over an existing impervious area in the rear yard, so there won't be, um, massive improvements or, or increases impervious in that location. The majority of the new improvements will take place, as I said, over the new impervious. Our maximum coverage by building and pavement will actually be reduced with this project from 39.6% to 39.2%.
Jeff, as far as the building additions are concerned, predominantly one-story in nature?
Yes, it is predominantly a one-story, uh, addition in nature. There's, um, a large ground floor addition, which is partially below grade, and a mass, uh, terrace above, and two small additions on, on both sides, uh, second-story additions on both sides of the, of the dwelling.
The additions will comply with the required rear and side yard setbacks?
Yes, the, the product conforms to all the bulk setbacks.
As far as the drainage improvements, can you give us a discussion on that, please?
Sure. We're proposing two 1,000-gallon sewage tanks in the front yard. All the proposed roof leaders, um, from the, from the front of the building, the entire structure will be now routed to two sewage tanks in the front yard. Currently, uh, the roof leaders went down to degrade and then flowed off, um, with no rhyme or reason. Now everything's going to be controlled in a manner where the stormwater on the site will be, um, in a much better position than with this project in previous.
And has a soil analysis been done?
No, not yet, but our, we, we will do, given a favorable percolation test to ensure that the...
I noticed that there's one line that leads to the curb.
Yes.
I want to see if you can do something about that, because we don't like the ice, the slope melt coming out of the curb line.
We understand. That line is a dedicated line for a few catch basins on the northwest side of the property. We're down gradient of all the above homes on that street, and we do see a lot of surface flow coming down from the adjacent properties. That's just a measure to take that water and route it away from?
You'll have to discuss that with the township engineer, whether or not they want another drywall or?
Understood.
Because lots of times we don't want to go at the curb line.
Okay, understood.
And when they backwash or drain the pool, where does that water go? When they backwash the pool?
Typically, with these newer pools, they have a self-contained backwashing system, so it doesn't require a typical discharge with a flexible hose that you would normally see to the lawn. But I do know that most of the new filter equipment has a self-contained backwashing system, so it's not the pool filter equipment that we're used to, that you see seeing in that manner where you have to discharge.
When you backwash it, where does the water go?
Where does the water go?
It just stays within the system.
Yes, yeah.
Self-cleaning.
Self-cleaning, yes.
Is your client committed to that system?
We are.
Okay. Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
Were there variances issued on this property for the original pool?
No, and my office always files an offer request for any historical zoning board or planning board applications.
And this is an in-ground pool that was there?
That's right.
And it's collapsed?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you know what the patio area around the new pool is, how it's going to be constructed?
The material?
Yeah.
I believe it's going to be a paver system.
So is it going to be?
Can it drain to an extent? Can it be drainable?
The?
Can we make it drainable?
Can you stipulate it'll be a paver system with no grouting?
We can stipulate that. We could also stipulate that we can put a perimeter drain around the whole?
Do both if you'd like.
Yeah, we can stipulate that will account for the impervious.
Because the amount of paper patio that you have plus the pool becomes a significant amount of our impervious coverage. And if we can deal with that, Mr. Chairman, then it's not really impervious.
Right.
The pool's a collector of water.
Correct.
So?
So, yeah, we can stipulate that, we can manage that.
The addition to the home, what is the purpose of those additions?
Well, we're enlarging some family room areas, I believe, bedroom areas being enlarged.
Yeah, yes, it's a family room, great room underneath, and it says, in addition to the dining area on the west side of the house, on the right side is the master bath.
That's all master bath?
Uh, yes. We do have the architectural plan to show you what it is.
So the bedrooms are going to stay the same. Family room of general family space is going to be enlarged.
Yes, yes, sir.
No new kitchens, none of that?
No.
Any more testimony from him?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions of the engineer? Everybody's happy? Okay. Next witness, any other one?
That's all we have.
That's all you have? Okay, all right. Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Questions of this witness? Nobody. Nobody. Anything else we need, guys? Mr.?
So they're going to do the? The side yard around the pool will be perfect, no grouting. The driveway and all that area, the way we come out. What's the other condition?
Subject engineers' letter.
Oh.
Did you see the engineers' letter?
We did not.
Oh, you didn't?
I emailed it to you guys.
You got it? You're good with all that?
Yeah.
You can make that part of the deal? Is there anything else you want to add?
We believe overall it'll be an improvement, Mr. Chairman, certainly making some upgrades to the home, upgrading drainage, resolving the pool and patio non-conformities, and as the board grant the application.
I know the property, I live around the corner from it. Manchester's a very nice street. Someone like to make a recommendation?
I'm voting yes.
Somebody making a recommendation?
I'm voting yes on the application.
You're happy with the application?
Yep.
It's the minimum, right?
Yep.
Okay. Someone like to frame a resolution?
I can do it. Application 2288, Michael Levine, 7 Manchester Street, Lot 474, Lot 3 in the R3 zone. I recommend we grant the C variance to construct additions, in-ground pool and patio contrary to sections 430 to 35, column 10, and conforming with the engineer's report.
Second, Snyder.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder. Snyder.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Yes. Results of variance is granted. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting, and then you'll be free to proceed.
Thank you.
Good luck.
No, so it's 82 on the documentation. Oh, oh. Yeah, that motion had the wrong number on it.
Yeah, 2282, yeah.
It's 22?
Yeah, you said 88, it's 82.
Okay. Okay. That's right.
It's 2282, not 2288.
Okay, let's go for another one. Case 2283, Booton Mosque.
Chairman, members of the board, Simone Calley, Tacho LLC, on behalf of the applicant, Booton Mosque and Learning Center. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
We are here tonight seeking minor site plan approval together with D1 variance relief for our proposed use, together with bulk variance relief. We are proposing a house of worship tonight at the property located at 39 Little Town Road. I have three witnesses that you'll hear testimony from this evening. The first witness is going to provide operational testimony and tell you about the congregation. Our second witness is our project architect, who's going to take you through the few design changes that we have to the existing building. And then finally, because we are here on a D1, we have our planner here who will take you through the planning proofs. And unless there's any preliminary questions, I would like to please jump right into it and call our first witness.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, raise your right hand. You swore firm testimony you're about to give before the board serves help you got. And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Shafi, S-H-A-F-I, last name U-L-L-E-H.
And your testimony will be?
Operational.
Operational, you're the owner?
Authorized agent.
Authorized agent. Okay, thank you. You're sworn as a factual witness. Just have a seat and please.
Thank you. All right, Shafi. Can you please start by telling the board members about your congregation? Do you have any other existing houses of worship in the area? And if so, why are you coming to Parsippany?
Yeah, we do have a few places, but we are now looking to find our own place, so our board decided to leave, to purchase our own worship.
Do you pull the microphone closer?
Can you speak up loud?
You can take it out, too.
That's all, just speaking.
It's on, you don't have to press anybody.
Okay, sorry. Yes, basically, our board decided to purchase our own building for the worship.
How many members do you anticipate being as part of your congregation?
We are anticipating about 40 families.
So is that, what does that translate to, about 100 people, would you say?
Approximately 80 to 100 people.
Do you have any full-time workers on staff?
No, we do only volunteers.
Only volunteers? And the volunteers, are they members of the congregation?
Yeah, they are.
Let's touch upon how those families arrive. And I want to get into parking and concerns that you may be aware of. How many, so if we have approximately 100 members of your congregation? 40 families? Do 100 cars come in when you have services?
No, they don't. We do, like, in the daily services, if I can say, like, in a Muslim faith, like, we do five times a prayer. So from dawn to late night. So I can say that during the day, from the day, approximately 15 to 20 congregations only. But on the Friday prayer, which is the main prayer, we are anticipating about 80 to 100 congregations.
80 to 100 people on a Friday? So Friday is your biggest day of prayer?
Yeah.
Okay.
During the day.
Do you find that family members travel together to the congregation?
Yeah, approximately three to four sometimes.
Okay, so a bunch of family members are coming in one car to services? All right, and you touched upon the days of the week. You would be in operation seven days a week, is that correct?
Yes.
Monday through Friday?
Monday, basically, yeah, seven days.
Oh, sorry, Monday through Sunday?
Yes.
Can you tell me the prayer sessions per day? I understand that you have five prayer sessions, is that correct?
Yes.
What time do those prayer sessions happen?
Actually, there's no set time, it's moved by the sun.
Okay.
So the earliest prayer is like at dawn to sunrise, so we have to pray like 10 minutes before the sunrise. So technically, the mom sets the timing. So right now, the Fajr prayer is 5:15. That is approximately last like 10 to 15 minutes. In the early morning prayers, we are anticipating about 5 to 7 congregations.
Five to seven members?
Yeah.
Okay, that early in the morning?
Yeah, that early. And the second prayer, which is the Zohar prayer, which is a lunchtime, mostly like 1:00 to 1:30, that is because of people, during the week, people are working, so that I am not anticipating approximately more than 10 or 12.
Okay.
Then, which is the evening prayer, is called like Assa prayer. That is when the shadow coming of the sun, that right now, the timing around 5:30, that is about 10-minute service, so that is anticipating about 10 to 15. For late evening and the late-night prayer, that is approximately, that is a mother prayer, that approximately we pray 3 minutes after sunset. That will be anticipating about 20 congregation. And the same thing is the late night, which is right now, the 9:30, which is approximately 20 congregation.
Okay, thank you.
The fourth prayer, what time?
People can come about 5 minutes or 7, 10 minutes earlier.
Sunset, just sunset?
Yeah, the sunset, yeah, around sunset, because we pray 3 minutes after sunset.
Thank you.
And then there's also weekends, correct?
Yeah, we can, basically, I can anticipate Sunday, but Sunday is an afternoon, probably, I can say 30 to 40, like, during the day.
And weekends, could that go a little bit later, till 10:30 at night?
No, that is basically, again, the prayers moved by the sun.
Okay.
So you can say like a fall time or summertime. Summertime is basically the late-night prayer goes to 10:30.
Okay.
Yeah, but obviously, during the holy month of Ramadan, that late-night prayer lasts about 1 to 1 and 1/2 hour. So that you can expect another 10:30 to sometime during the peak summer, when it's a day longer, yes, approximately, I can say around 10 to 11:30 or?
During Ramadan? And thank you for explaining that, because I'm of a different faith, so I do not know this.
I totally understand.
Okay, so Ramadan is going to be a little bit later than the normal prayer?
If Ramadan falls in summer, obviously, the late night, we get a prayer start late night, and the summer is a longer day.
Right.
So we pray late in the night, so that I can say, if you can say, in July or June, the longest day, June is the longest day, so you can anticipating approximately, the prayer goes until 11:30.
Okay. I understand, thank you.
But in the fall, obviously?
It's going to be different.
It's a different, it will finish around 7, 7:30, I believe.
I understand, thank you. Everything that will happen, it's indoors, correct? Do you do anything outside?
Oh, no.
Do you anticipate, you know, is there anything that will have music or noises outside? Nothing like that?
We are only use a speaker system inside during the prayer. We don't use anything outside.
No bells during the, to call the prayer?
No.
So there's no outside audio at all?
No, no, outside audio, no. It's inside the speaker, maybe Imam is praying.
Okay. Does Imam live there?
What?
Does Imam live there?
Oh, no.
No, okay. So nobody living there?
No.
Just one last question. So we discussed the congregation, we discussed that there's a lot of volunteers. There is a board and a president, correct? How many people are, how many board members do you?
Seven.
Seven board members? Is it the board members who are typically the volunteers, or do also like the families volunteer?
Typically, the board members and plus the families are the volunteers.
These are board members, including, in the 40 families?
Yeah, part of the 40 families.
How, the congregation, has it grown from a few families to 40? Or is it static or?
I can anticipating if I see that approximately 2 to 3% a year is increased, like, if a new family member to join.
So it'd be a couple of new families a year?
Yeah, a couple of new families a year, but anticipating around 2% or 3%. All right.
How long have you been existence?
We started Booton Mosque since 2019.
2019, okay.
Are you affiliated with the town of Booton? There's a mosque there?
Technically, not affiliated, but we, there's a boss there, we right now pray different places, so, yes, it's not affiliated, but we are praying.
So some of those families will be coming here?
Exactly.
So typically, Friday is your busy day?
Yeah, basically, the Friday is the main, usually the holiday, in terms of the holiday, days of the holiday, and then we pray like a day prayer, which is the busiest day. This is a very important prayer, if I can say, like, a Friday is a very important day.
And is there any other holidays other than Ramadan that you celebrate?
Yeah, we do some other days are celebration, but Ramadan is the biggest.
And is that for the whole month or just certain?
It's a whole month. You know, Ramadan is last for 30 days. Depends on the moon, but it's like 29 to 30 days.
And during Ramadan, you expect how many people?
I can say technically, the weekend was the busy, but the same like a Friday is the main, but during the day, especially the late-night prayer, we can anticipating some more prayer. I can say, but right now, we anticipating about 20 congregation in the late night, so in Ramadan, you can double it, 40, 50.
What's the mass and capacity of your facility? Occupancy?
I'm sorry?
What is the occupancy maximum of your?
The main hall is, we got the plan is 150 people.
150, so you aren't nowhere near filling that?
No.
But you'd like to, right?
Me, depend on the size, because it's all the town laws and then we need to be.
Oh, and grow.
So just to clarify from my notes, I wrote down at one point, he said, Friday nights, you might have 80 to 100 people?
No, I'm not talking about the Friday night, it's a Friday day.
Friday day?
Yeah, one, two, two, two.
New day.
Okay, 80 to 100 in one shot, or is that for the whole day?
No, that's not, because, like I explained, there's a five-dayly prayer, right? So during the daily prayer from Monday to Sunday, except the Friday afternoon prayer is a heavy prayer, where a lot of people come, I can say about 80 to 100.
So Friday to 100, 80 to 100 people? Not 80 to 100 cars, 80 to 100 people?
Yeah, it's 800 people, not the cars.
Where are you now? You're in Booton?
Yeah, I'm from Booton.
No, where is the mosque now?
We don't have a mosque right now.
Okay, so you, okay.
You just use Booton's mosque?
Yeah.
So, okay, so now you're praying in somebody else's mosque, and you just want to have your own facility?
Yeah, exactly.
And do you feel that, is it a situation where some of your congregants also visit other mosques as well? Like, people of different faith, if they miss a 5 o'clock mass, they shoot to another mass that has a more convenient time?
It happens, like, for example, I can give my example. If I'm not able to reach a Friday to my mosque, I'm somewhere stuck in a, somewhere, somewhere, if I can find the mosque, I can definitely do that.
Okay, so it's the same dynamic? Okay, thank you.
Exactly. Wherever they can find, then they can.
So with Parsippany having such a large population, would you anticipate people not in your mosque coming to prayer? Like, that are not to pray, that are not accounted in the known 80 to 100? Like, I really worry about the max, like, the biggest number we can see at one point.
It's super open, so, but obviously, we need to lift with the board, so obviously, they, we live in a, so it's open to anyone.
No.
But usually, they are stuck with their mosque, they go, they're, they're. But we are anticipating over families.
Where is it?
Anticipating is least for, like I said, in the beginning, for items, but it's open to everybody.
Any other questions by the board? Nope, nobody? Are there any members of the public that have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Hannah here in C. No. Next witness?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mike, you want to come to the podium, state your name, first and last, for the record, please?
Michael, K-U-Y-B-I-D-A.
Can you raise your right hand? You swore firm testimony you're about to provide before the board serves help you got.
Yes.
And your testimony will be as the architect, and all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, they are.
And you've provided testimony before either this board or other boards and stated in? All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn in.
Please spell your last name again.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Please spell your last name.
K-U-Y-B-I-D-A.[1750.04]
K U Y B I N D A.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Fully sworn and in qualified, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Um, Mike, can you please take the board through first the property and then can you jump into what we're proposing at the property? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, is this page that was filed or is this the survey that was?
I made a copy of the survey that I think that I prepared in a second. So we have the existing property which is on, uh, Booton Road and it's approximately fifty-eight thousand five hundred ninety square feet, you know, permitted and required plot size is forty thousand. The lot which requires is hundred feet, existing is three hundred and sixty-nine feet. Existing building, uh, there's no change to the footprint, uh, all the work and redo. Portion of office area converted into mosque and then we can say exterior, so that, uh, except back wired, it was, uh, six foot two, uh, the side doors, the side doors are seventy-five, the existing is four hundred and three hundred and six, side doors are wired, twenty-four feet. The building type, uh, made of stone, that stores a thirty-five. Existing building is a one-story. That's the point.
You don't have to press the button, it's already on, so.
Start over again?
No.
The existing building is a one-story, thirteen point five eight feet, what's proposed is the one-story, but we're increasing the height because we're adding a dome to the, uh, the permitted, uh, maximum plot coverage is twenty percent, the existing building is at nine point three and the proposed is at nine point three. The, uh, total lot coverage permitted is seventy-five percent, what's existing is fifty-three point two and what's proposed is fifty-three point two, so we're not increasing the area of the building. Um, the minimum gross floor area required is five thousand square feet, what's existing is fifty-two ninety-seven and, and proposed is fifty-two ninety-seven, so we meet that. So this is the existing building on the, the southern side is what is the portion that we're providing for the mosque. Um, to the right of that is the existing parking lot and what we're proposing is to re-strike it. Right now the parking, existing has strike, runs around the perimeter, uh, created parallel parking lines, tandem parking, and it's a portion of a triangular nature adjacent to the building that, that removes some of the ants, in the patching up paving to facilitate the parking. Um, we re-strike, uh, handicap parking, one being a vehicle and the other one being van accessible at the entrance, designated signage and striking. Um, on the northern side of the existing building is the office used in indicating the, uh, striking there also. So what we're proposing, it's what on the roof plan is that the portion of the building indicating the proposed large prayer room, the small prayer room, the occupancy is based on the county calculations, uh, maximum, per testimony that, you know, US families, but I posted what the maximum, uh, occupancy would be. On the, uh, roof plan, I've indicated a proposed dome which is inherited from the mosque, which is depicted on the elevations, as you can see on the front elevation which is west. Um, there was existing windows, the office area, and they weren't uniformer in location, so to give the building some continuity with the proposed metal screens, uh, to conceal the, uh, windows, we leave the windows in natural daylight into the building and the, uh, metal screen just, um, unified with a little different build and add up to cover on the west. Do I put metal screen there? Well, what happens is, right now the windows of the building are punched in and it's not uniform, so it gives the building more of a mosque look and to not close up the windows, we're going to leave the existing windows and create screens and remount it off and it'll be, um, semi-transparent, so we still get lighting for the buildings, but it gives uniform look to the building.
Is it entire, entire building or the portion of the building?
It'll be on the, the front of the building and south, which is the, the rear of the building, uh, there's no change.
No change.
And on the north end, uh, which is the existing office area, we're just going to reface the, uh, the building with the same structure so that the three sides of the building have, have the same continuity and it would be visible from the road.
What color are the metal screens?
Everything would be like a neutral earth tone.
Good. What is the color of the dome?
The dome would be, uh, north white, similar to the building.
Not gold? Not gold?
Not gold.
How about the mini, which I can?
The same thing, the building's going to have, uh, it'd be maybe two different texture, color tones, but it'll be north white, keep within the neutral tones.
And, and there's no audio system in, in either one of those?
Correct, there's no, no.
There's no outside any?
No outside audio.
Okay.
And then, and you, that's, what's the, it's thirty-five feet?
Yeah. Thirty-five feet is the maximum building height, which at this point is at the top and near.
You have exceptions for steeples and things of that order?
Yeah.
This is akin to a steep.
Let me try to, I, just, the metal over the windows, I, that look, okay? Is there, is there a religious significant for the mosque to have that?
Yes.
Why not just put in new windows if the other windows are all bowed or whatever?
Can I show you something? I have your hand.
Anyone?
Yes.
Just not what we, actually what we're doing because we're, this is what we're looking at.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have two sheets.
Mark it. Got it.
I don't have enough.
So you're showing us a screening here, this is obviously at the building we're talking about, it's a example.
What?
You're, you're showing us a nice example here of how the dome and the tower would be looking at this, not the building.
Correct.
One picture shows the screening and one picture shows how the mosque would look with the rooftop delving.
So the picture that has, shows the mosque, um, as you can see it's all monotone, if you look closely, you can see there's screen inserts in the open. The second photograph is basically showing you what the screen would be blocking the windows. So as I said, the existing buildings have windows that are punched in, so not, so we keep the windows, go with the screens, the masks, so you have a uniform look.
From that look, it just looks like you're going to put metal mesh over the curtain. This looks much better. Thank you.
So is it, is it going to extend off the building like this picture, A to?
Yeah, it'd extend off maybe some inches or something like that.
Good. So we go ahead.
No.
Any other questions by the board or is there, do you have any more testimony of this witness?
I have some, uh, questions based on, uh, the reports that we received.
Okay.
E D spaces, if required, we will provide them, correct?
Correct.
Um, you testified as to the lighting on the building that's existing.
So you'll comply with all the engineers and planners' reports?
Yes. So I've indicated site landing, that it's all mounted, which has the detail, um, there's existing lighting, all mounted on the perimeter of the building that remains, and the dome will have some lighting that, landscape lighting, that'll be mounted on.
So you'll comply with?
Yes.
Are, are you the, uh, expert who would testify at a trash pickup, where that dumpster would be located and our truck would get in and out?
Well, the dumpster system, in your, as long as I know, we're not changing anything, we're not moving it.
Well, I have a question though, as far as the, um, the parking layout, it seems that the, um, the gates of the trash receptacle would be in conflict with that less parking space.
Well, trash picker will be your hours.
Well, I, you may have to look at the trash closure a little bit, I don't know what, what's it at.
No, I mean it's a private hall, so they can, you know, stipulate times, not the traffic.
Usually the trash pickup is in the morning.
What?
Morning time, right, trash pickup?
Yeah, but it's a private hall, it's not the town, so they can, they can schedule that, dedicate when, when you pick it up, not interfere with the, uh...
Will the members of the congregation, assuming that there's a conflict with peak prayer times and the trash being picked up, do you think that we can, um, advise the board that we will make sure that the actual time from peak prayer times?
Yes.
So that there's no conflict.
Just one additional question regarding the one to, the four parking spaces that behind the building to the left?
Yeah.
That seems like a very awkward set of spaces to access. And where the number one is, is there, is there another vehicle there, another car there?
These parking spaces are there and what we propose to do is have the volunteers that, that would be in the mosque, uh, parking there so that, uh...
It just, uh, appears to me to be very awkward to get in and out of those without bollards or something to protect the building.
Well, if they're volunteers, they come prior to and after, leave after the, the congregation, so that, you know, backing out, you'd have an additional room to move their vehicles.
Right.
But why wouldn't you want to put a safety measure in place to protect the building? I, I don't understand.
Well, the bollards for the building, for people are backing up from that spot, that might be something that you might want to consider.
You're, you're...
The bollards are all about protection for that building, why wouldn't?
It seems like the parking space.
Who agrees with bollards tonight?
I'm sorry, you.
By those four spots that are tucked in the back?
Yeah, that corner of the building.
That's going to be the northeast corner of the building.
Yeah. And that corner of the building is completely.
Uh, the signage, there was a, a note, I think, in Chad's report about the signage piece, um, only the copy's going to change, right?
Just the text, yes.
Size will change, same sign changes, same size.
Exactly, but the structure is staying the same.
Just go for new face.
And take off and put on their copy for their mosque. A, a few more notes on, uh, from Chad's report, driveway, um, with downstairs, your plans have been revised to note all of that, right, on the latest plan revision?
Yeah, I've indicated the existing roof leaders and there's no change because we're not doing anything to the building.
Just want to make sure we cover everything in your affirmative testimony, so in short, um, we have no issues with any of the engineering comments and we will be complying with everything.
What I would suggest is the agreements on no outside audio, audio, the bollards. There was one other condition, oh, the screening's going to take place, those would be notes on the revised plan that comply.
Okay, no, um...
Audio.
No audio, so.
Right. That way it makes it a lot...
None, none is proposed, but, yes, I understand.
And also there would, there would be no, uh, uh, residents in the mosque.
Nobody's going to live there.
Nobody's going to. Yeah, just put it on the plan as the conditions.
I understand, yes.
Makes it a lot easier for everybody.
Um, I don't think they have any more questions for this witness.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public? Whoa, 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 go ahead.
Is your lighting, is the dome, um, that, is that lit up all the time or?
Better be lit up.
I was just curious.
Lighting, lighting, hours of lighting.
No lighting in the dome?
No lighting.
No, there's some lights.
No further questions?
Then we have to put something in it that it's not...
We need the timing.
Half hour after services.
This is, you don't have to, they're just, I think, clarifying the... All right, you heard the board's question about lighting.
Yes, uh, basically we are, we are going to be, not going to be leave at late night lights, except for the Ramadan, when we can finish the prayer, we can shut it off.
Time, time.
Time is, uh, again, is a, is a very variance, depending, the summer is going to be around eleven, eleven-thirty, mid, around P M, and in the winter probably we can shut it off nine o'clock.
So eleven, eleven, would the board be, we're able to eleven, eleven-thirty shut off?
No, later than that.
There's not, there's nobody near it.
The only residence is Jimmy Vigilante's old house, I don't think any other resident can see it.
I'm not even sure, is that a residence or not?
No, we, we, I thought we, uh...
Did we make it all business?
I don't think we did all business.
I, I, I don't see a...
As long as it was all business now.
I don't see a light, a lighting issue because you're not going to be bothering anybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
But still no later than eleven regardless?
Eleven's fine.
And, uh, you're not adding any extra lights? No. Okay, thank you.
So, now, just to, on the lighting, I thought though that we did, they're going to have some additional lighting for, for the additional parking, no, for the nighttime?
The side light.
Yeah, that's there now?
No, there's no, no side lighting at all, no.
Okay, so new side lighting is going in there, that will be on during prayer time or that'll be on whenever it's dark, I guess, right?
The lighting around the parking.
Yes, going to do one with the dog and...
Will it be on like a timer for?
Yeah, yeah, timer.
Do you have any more testimony of this witness?
No, I do not.
Any more questions from the board? No? Any members of the public have questions of the architect on the testimony you gave this evening? Here in Nancina.
Thank you very much. Our final witness is our planner.
So raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony, you're about to give before the board's truth, self-help got?
I did.
For the record, can you state and spell your name?
Paul Ricci, R I C C I.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
They are.
You're a licensed planner?
I'm a licensed professional planner since the year two thousand.
And you've been qualified either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
I've been qualified before this board and over two hundred boards throughout the state.
Mr. Chairman, he's, uh, sworn in and qualified.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thanks, Paul. Paul, can you, um, please tell us what you reviewed in preparation of your testimony tonight?
Sure, um, I reviewed your, your most recent master plan, the zoning ordinance, uh, reviewed the plans, packages submitted, conducted a, a site visit, reviewed the professional memorandum, uh, and prepared, uh, planning testimony for the meeting.
Thank you. Can you please take the board through your planning proofs?
Uh, sure, um, I think the board recognizes that, you know, religious uses are inherently beneficial use, uh, for that reason, we have a, a modified, uh, version of the use variance criteria that you typically hear, and I just want to also clarify that it appears that we need two D variances, um, because the office space that's remaining is not going to be accessory, um, that's going to be a, a second D variance and the D variance to permit, uh, the religious use that was, that was testified to, I just want to be, uh, clear about that. And that's from section, uh, four thirty twelve in your ordinance regarding, uh, principal uses on the...
And that's from Section 430-12 in your ordinance regarding principal uses on the lot. Regarding the religious use, it's an inherently beneficial use by statute. That's a use that promotes the general welfare of the community. For inherently beneficial uses, the board's aware there's a reduced amount of testimony required for variance relief. By a matter of law, this use meets the positive criteria. That means it could be located in any zone throughout any community. So for uses such as this, the weight of the testimony is on the negative criteria. And that negative criteria has a four-part test. It's called the SICA four-part balancing test. And that test asks us to identify the public interest at stake. It asks us to identify any proposed negative impacts, where those negative impacts can be mitigated. And then the fourth part of the test is to balance, on balance, do the benefits of this use outweigh the detriments? And if the benefits outweigh the detriments, the court suggests that the board should vote in affirmative for an application. I think it's fair when we talk about the public interest that freedom of religion is a protected right under the U.S. Constitution. It's essentially the basis for which this country was developed. To support that fact, in 2000, the federal government enacted the Religious Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. It's, one of its express purposes was to protect religious institutions from imposition and implementation of land use regulations, which are unreasonably burdensome, unexercised buildings, trying to make it easier for churches to locate these communities. And it saw three things, limit rights of government entities to impose a substantial burden on religious institutions, prohibit government entities from totally excluding or unreasonably limiting religious institutions on less than equal terms with nonreligious institutions. And the reason I point this out is that, under New Jersey law, when you look at inherently beneficial uses, the court suggests rank where they stand in terms of the inherent needs and the public that associate with those. And religious use is ranked very high in this regard. The court's also suggesting that municipality may not directly regulate religious worship, although it may exercise reasonable authority over the potential negative impacts such as noise litter and traffic congestion, by way of example. The second part of the test asks us to identify any potential negative impacts associated with the use. I reviewed the planner's review, I reviewed your engineers' review, I was here for the testimony this evening. This is a site that's an existing property. It complies with the parking requirements in the zone. It's far removed from residential properties. It's between two highways, Route 46, Route 287, the land uses in the area essentially consists of a fire station, a commercial building next door, it's near the Smoko Gas Station, Dunkin' Donuts, an auxiliary parking lot, and then you have roadway turnarounds associated with the highway system. So it's well removed from residential uses. It's also in a zone that also permits other institutional uses. It permits schools in the zone as well. So even that, it doesn't need to be particularly well suited under the law. It's my position that this site is particularly well suited for the use as well. And then if we look at the site, it has a building coverage of 9.3%, a lot coverage of 53.2%. And this was discussed by the architect, all well under ordinance requirements. We do need a variance or waiver for the tandem spaces. This is a low turnover use. We believe they can operate, and it's a better alternative not to further impact other areas. The site provides additional parking. We are under the imperious coverage for the site in that regard. So we are requesting that variance that I did not mention as well. So there's only really small changes that are being proposed, that have been testified to, and we also heard that there's no music, no noise, etc. So there's really no substantial negative detriments that have identified for the really argument. In terms of mitigating, the applicant has agreed to conditions by the board, bollards, turning off the lights, no individual, clergy members, a long term, I apologize, I'm not a priest, but no individual living in the building as part of this application. And then the fourth part of the test is to balance the benefits versus the detriments. And I think I clearly stated the intent of inherently beneficial use to bring re ar lupa, the freedom of religion in this country. That's a substantial public interest associated with that. And here, the negatives are middle school, negative vigil at the best. And I think it's clear in this context that the benefits of this application outweigh the detriment, and it eats the burden proof of the use variance.
Thank you, Paul. I have no further questions for this witness.
Rather complete testimony. Any questions on the use? I mean, it's an inherently beneficial use. It fits? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given this evening? I hear none, seen none. That's it?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's anything left for me to offer that wasn't just summed up in Paul's planning testimony. So we respectfully request this board to act favorably on our application for minor site plan approval, D and C variance relief, and we would agree to all the conditions discussed in testimony tonight with the board. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We don't need to go into conference, do we?
I don't think so.
Someone make a statement as to the.
I'll make it.
Go ahead.
I think this is a very good application.
Use your mic.
It's a good application, and the location is a perfect spot for this use. And there are no residences around. There's not going to be any outside audio, no noise, and the prayer times are mostly of peak. That means it doesn't affect the traffic, and I think it's a good application. I'm looking for it.
Someone frame a resolution so we can move on?
Application 2283, Booton Mosque and Islamic Learning Center, 39 Littleton Road, Block 454, Lot 3. In the R4 zone, I recommend that the board grants the minor site plan C, D variances for religious use.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll?
Berkoitsch.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Horry.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, everyone. Welcome to Parcipon.
You just have to change your name from Booton Mosque to Parcipon Mosque now. It's only family.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Now get to work. Yeah, Mr. O'Neill, you ready? Okay, go back. Good job, Counselor. Don't tell me I'm not going to go home with rain. And papers, too. Finish this.
I love these guys.
Okay. Where we leave off, Mr. O'Neill?
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, once again. Joseph O'Neill, we left off, not sure exactly where we left off, but where we were going to start was with modified architectural testimony. I believe I'm recalling my architect. All I had left really was the planner, but I'd like to, with your permission, bring the architect back.
You make, yes, please.
Thank you. She needs just a minute.
Were there any new plans submitted?
No, there were no new plans.
Let me ask you a question. Did you see the new fire marshal report?
Well, I don't know. Are we talking about the email from Matthew Topolowski@gmail.com to Nora?
Yes.
Dated February 23rd? It's not on letterhead or signed?
Is that the date?
Is Mr. Topolowski here today?
No.
Well, then, I see this correspondence and reject its submission.
Hold on, let's carry this case.
Yep.
Let's carry this case.
I think there's a fundamental issue here, Mr. O'Neill, that he's telling you.
I'm going to address some of the issues, Rick.
But the way he, I read this letter, you can't beat the subcut fires code. So we go through this whole thing, and you get an approval, you're not going to be able to get a building from it. So I think that has to get resolved. I mean, it's.
Well, I am addressing issues that were brought up in this correspondence.
Okay, then let's proceed.
But the other issue is, if there's no new plans, and he hasn't revised new plans, to I think the planner's point, would you want to try to, like, talk to him and see if he has any issues or problems with the updated plans? I mean, it's your case.
I mean, you're right. Maybe we need to have him here. I mean, it's brand new, I agree. The 11th hour pisses everybody off, the straight English, but it happened.
But this was dated February 23rd?
Well, I just saw it.
There was no official follow-up or anything, Nora?
I'm sorry, hold on one second. No, what you have from the fire chief.
Did you ever speak to him about this?
No. No, he just, I asked him for, you know, his review. You wanted a review from him. And this is what he sent me. He didn't put it on a letterhead. I can ask him to put it on a letterhead if that is what you're looking for. You know, there's no guarantee he can come to a meeting should there be a fire.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I was expecting a report. I figured, I mean, I appreciate, and I did get this in a timely manner, and I did relay this to my witnesses. Absolutely. Yes, I did. But the veracity of this, I mean, I figured it would be a report. I mean, I took this as a heads up.
That's his report.
I mean, we could compel, we can compel him to come here and put him under oath and provide testimony as to what his issues are, but his issues on the original are probably going to be different than what you've changed here. I think that's where the planner was going. If those issues can be resolved from his February letter to the new drawings, maybe it's not an issue at all. Maybe you're in compliance. I have no idea, no one here on the board would know. What we would do, have to accept the new plans and then resubmit it to the fire marshal for his secondary review. I would think, would you agree?
Does that make sense?
Help me out, what are the new plans?
We've revised the building itself to add an egress in the rear. We shortened the building up.
And these are, these are on file?
These are not, these were just done.
Okay, so you're going to introduce them as exhibits? As exhibits, huh?
Right.
And we have no clue whether or not this is going to satisfy the fire company?
We don't know what the fire guy says or how, he didn't do any, did he?
No, nobody's seen these plans.
What's the requirement for us to get plans? 10 days prior to the meeting? We haven't gotten the 10 days prior to the meeting. Well, time's a wasting. Let's, you can make your presentation, and then we'll go from there.
Was this the, I don't think this is.
No, it's a new witness.
Okay. Ma'am, raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony you're about to give before the board, the streets up and down.
Yeah.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Brittany Klimm, K-L-I-M-M.
And you're an architect?
I'm an architect, I'm an associate at Mistry Design.
Okay, and all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yeah.
You've either provided testimony before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. You're sworn, just please speak into the, and qualified, please speak into the microphone, Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn and barred.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Why don't you go ahead?
So we're listening to this, and we have nothing to look at, no frame of residence, nothing other than her pointing to something far away from me and others.
All I can say is this is not going to be the last meeting on this application, so.
I brought with me a handout that I'll hand to each person.
Is that A1?
This is a revised A2.01. Do you have pictures for that, too?
What's that? Do you have pictures for that or any type of renderings?
The rendering is the same, I have the rendering with me, yes.
So you're calling it 8.201?
So this is.
A5.
A5.
A5, okay. Marked as A5, the drawing number is A2.01. I have a revision date on here of April 27, 2023. I'd like everybody to get the copy. Have they reached the end? At first glance, it does look very similar to what was presented in February by Mr. Mistery. However, the building itself is two feet reduced in length and shifted forward 2.7 feet to give us an increase in the rear yard. We now are at 12.7 feet in the rear yard, which allowed us to get a rear egress, which is not required by code. By code, we're still required to have one egress. This is going to be a fully sprinkled building. The interior layout is largely similar to what was presented in February. The difference is, we have two feet less in the living room. This bedroom closet moved to this side, and we lost two feet out of this storage space. All of the layout and the interior and materials is all the same as presented in February. The bulk has changed slightly. We've reduced the building because it's reduced by two linear feet, and it is now, the first floor is now 1,890 square feet. The upper level is 1,770 square feet, for a total of 5,430 square feet. For upper levels, each level is 1770. And then there is 705 square feet exterior, which is the balconies in the front, which remains, covered entry, which remains, and the rear stair, which is new. We're still asking for the height variance for three stories. We meet the height of 35 feet, I believe it's 34 foot, four inches. And that is, that is all the new testimony I have to provide right now.
I do have a question. There is the entrance in the, you're exiting out the rear now, and.
Yes, would you like me to explain that further?
Yes.
So the egress will be coming out from the units from bedroom number three. There was a window here before. It will now be a door, and this will provide egress down, and the third floor and second floor units will be identical. And then you'll come out at the bottom here, and you can proceed around the building. I believe this side setback is about five feet. The larger side? I don't have the measurement here because it's not the civil plan, but I believe it's five, five feet around the building.
Is this enclosed or open?
It's open.
Construction?
It could be wood or metal. The construction has not been determined yet.
Three stories of wooden fire escape?
It'd be two stories. It could, we could, it could be metal or non-combustible.
It'd be three stories.
Three stories.
Three stories.
Three-story fire-rated exit, right?
Yes, it goes up to the third floor. There's two flights to get up to the third floor.
Did you review the fire marshal's report and his comments?
Yes, I did.
You going to comment on those? Or not?
We do not have any direct comments to it.
He raises some issues. Okay.
We are providing the secondary escape, as he had asked for. We are providing the secondary escape as he asked for.
I see that.
He asked for it to not pass the path from the bedroom to kitchen, and we are complying with that.
What about his statement that they will be unable to access the second or third floors? You have no comment on that?
I believe she just indicated we corrected that with the entrance on the rear.
Won't they be able to climb those stairs?
No, the roof. They testified that there's electrical wires in the front, so they couldn't reach the roof with the ladder truck.
What did they do for the other adjacent properties that had that issue?
We're not here for.
Adjacent properties are not three floors up.
For height, there's only variance for story.
We're not looking for variance.
This complies with the height of the zone. And there are other structures this high in the zone.
That's not the issue.
That is the issue. The issue is, is he going to run up with a ladder? Is this what we're talking about? The ladder truck?
You have to talk to him about it. We don't have the fire marshal. We're trying to get answered to.
I got to hunt the fire marshal down.
I think it's going to, as I said, be out.
We'll subpoena him for our next meeting.
I mean, it's pretty basic in terms of whether or not you can.
Basically, this is a residence safety, but.
Why you think I open it up when we start talk? You want to go.
The fire could easily do it. The rear stairs are not enclosed, there's no door, there's no lock. There wouldn't be anyone accessing it and just going through that if they needed to.
And what is his problem to give the clearance?
What do you mean, I'm sorry?
I'm coming up to the balconies in front as well as the ladder.
Provided the.
On a ladder truck would have.
What do you mean, no lock? I'm sorry.
The stairs in the back, they're open. There's no, there's no door, there's no lock. There's nothing preventing a firefighter from accessing those stairs.
Fully outside, secondary.
Right. So how many hoses have you dragged? Seriously, and I'm not, I'm not being sarcastic, this is not cheeky, but how many? Well, no, well, I hear, I hear what you're saying, okay? But it does, in the first presentation, it doesn't take a firefighter, and this board raised concerns in the initial hearing, doesn't take a firefighter to question, right? Some of the firefighting challenges that this application may present. So again, you know, you not having the experience, we not having the experience, I don't know. We're going to need somebody with the experience who does this day in and day out to talk about this application as it relates to fire, first responder dynamics.
I would think there's other properties where they.
They're not directly.
Again. We've saw, yeah. Where are your renderings? Where are your renderings?
Is there a dry standpipe in the system?
Whatever is required, there will be, there will be sprinklers, yeah.
I'm glad there's going to be a lot of things that you're stating, but we don't have renderings. We barely got this.
You have.
I'm not comfortable with moving forward with this. And you know what? I'm going to, I'm going to stick my neck out. Other attorneys and applicants have been thrown out the door and told to come back later in presenting us stuff extremely last minute. And I do agree, we need the fire, the fire chief here. Your volunteers here, we need subject matter experts to speak to this. They need to be here.
Was sprinklers in the original plan?
Yes, it has to be.
There was, there was.
They're required by code.
I have a question now. Is any side yard or rear yard, you know, clearances changed?
The rear yard changed to twelve point seven feet.
Twelve point seven, and it was.
We could bring Mr. Corzine back to discuss that detail, Mr. Corzine.
Okay, well, she did mention some, something about when she moved the.
If the building is to move back, but these.
So if the building moved back.
Forward, toward the right.
Forward, yes. So now we have twelve point seven feet clearance in the back?
Correct.
It was eight before?
So can you still park cars in the front, travel?
Yeah, now it's even with the building next to it, the strip center.
So.
There was plenty of room there, and we shortened the garages up.
The space came out of the storage space, the garage side, and it stays the same.
They were very long. Now they're more.
I think, I think the improvements are noteworthy, okay? And great, great commitment, okay? To address some of the issues, the six-hundred-pound gorilla here is. This board was most concerned about the ability for the fire company to access this in case of emergency. At this point, we do not have very good indication that the fire marshal would approve that. My question is, why should we bring here, talking about, even if we agree with these nice improvements, okay? And the fire marshal says, we can't, we can't approve that. Why do we do any, why do we want to receive, Mr. O'Neal?
I'll tell you what. We will submit these directly to the fire, to like Parsony Fire Department. We will solicit, under my letterhead, a report, asking him to comment on these plans along with the previously submitted plan, showing the sprinklers to address this misimpression.
Is there any reason you wouldn't make an appointment with him?
Well, I'm going to reach out formally because of the proceedings, but I will call him myself. And I will do everything with correspondence to Ms. Jolie, so you can see that I'm doing it. And we will proceed from there.
Do we want to hear from your planner tonight?
I guess not.
I mean, we got a half hour. Is his testimony going to be more than thirty minutes?
No, it is not. Well, then we'll hear from him.
Let's, I'm just trying to make use of time.
I don't think you're going to.
What's that? We're going to have to. Who's going to subpoena, you guys come in, come to the next meeting?
Joe's going to get contacted. If he can't, if he doesn't have it, then we have to do the subpoena.
We'll still subpoena him.
We'll still subpoena, okay.
Because the planner is going to be at real disadvantage not knowing what the outcome is. I think we're just going to go and.
As a planner, you.
I just, I, I don't know how you can get started.
Now, it's just, since we're coming back, I can hear what Ms. Snyder is saying. What rendering are you looking for?
Well, just, I don't know, you have.
Are you looking for the rear steps?
Rear render.
Well, if you're changing this, I'd like, I'd like to see what other changes in regards to the exterior, anything, anything that can help us put everything into context. I don't understand why we're getting just an incomplete amended package. It's got to be, is it made?
Did we do?
I guess it would be fair, when you speak to the fire marshal, he may say you need those metal stairs, or if you're going to do.
Well, it's got to comply with the code, so.
So whatever, so, so once you probably get that, then you could do a ren, some type of a, maybe a drawing or.
I mean, the back of the building is going to change some look, so they should know what it looks like.
You want a picture of what they do?
This is not your first rodeo, Mr. O'Neal, and I'm saying this with all due respect, but I just like, you know, it would be helpful, and I would think you would want to be helpful toward the board in regards to seeing renderings that you initially presented to us, and now they're amended?
I can't remember ever doing a rear rendering on something like this, but I'm happy to do it. I've done it for commercial product. We've done it for apartment buildings.
You're almost like family here. Why wouldn't you want to present renderings for us so we could put everything into context?
Well, we're going to, we'll submit them. I will provide, you know, I did not provide the rear rendering. I would be very candid with you because no one's going to be able to see it. So that's why I didn't provide the rear rendering. You're going to be standing in a twelve-foot backyard, so you can't even get much of a pickup football game going back there.
It's an application, Mr. O'Neal.
Yeah, but I don't provide.
And it's part of the application.
I don't normally provide renderings.
Well, we're asking for it. We're asking for it.
We're focused on the back right now, so that's just the visual of the back. And I know, I appreciate you doing it. I don't want to beat a dead horse, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I'm going to do it, so.
I could see why you didn't provide it initially.
So are we carrying the planner for the next meeting or what?
Yes, we are.
We're going to carry him. Is there any other thing else that, there's no other witnesses you have? We, we will get ahold of Mr. Topolowski. You can call him, and Mr. King will also take care of the necessary paperwork, and hopefully we will have a formal report in our hands before he comes to testify, okay?
I will be more than happy to accept a formal report.
I understand.
And then you'll talk to him about when you need it before you come back, correct? So you can amend whatever.
I think Nora should contact.
I'm going to ask him to provide it before the next meeting.
Yeah, but you're going to need.
A formal document, right?
You're going to need it before, so you can.
I can, well, he's going to get in touch with him, right? I'll tell him he's got a supply.
Okay, fine.
We're going to subpoena him.
Well, a situation like this, I think it should come down thoroughly, because it's a questionable situation.
It's not considered a time.
We've had them before where.
It's not considered a time employee.
But this is part of the job.
If it's not with your fire.
He's a paid commissioner. He's a paid commissioner.
And he should be here to ask.
Otherwise, you're talking in September.
All right, so here's, we need a date, Nora.
You said yes to that. July twenty-sixth.
July what?
Twenty-fifth.
Six.
Twenty-sixth.
Sixth. Where am I, July twenty-sixth?
Hopefully here.
I'm going to miss one of the July meetings, I know that. Okay. July twenty-fifth, okay. Anything else?
I'll grant all, as this matter be carried without further notice, I'll grant all necessary extensions through end of August.
End of August, okay. Motion to carry this case to July twenty-sixth without further notice, and with whatever extensions are required.
Senator Snyder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any other business, Nora?
Pete, we have the contract?
Yes. So every year, we have to have a contract for the planner, the engineer, and the attorney.
Right.
There's three contracts.
Right.
And I believe they haven't changed, is that correct? Planner and engineer, same as twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Same as twenty-twenty-two? Yep, so there's been no increase in anyone's rate of pay.
So we just verbally approve them?
Just verbal approve, get a resolution, then you sign.
Someone make a, make a motion to approve the contracts as they stood in the previous year? Any discussion, Nora, phone the roll?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Marie.
Yes.
Reddy.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So I go home with one case?
Have a contract.